Gracious Father, we thank you for this moment, we thank you for this opportunity of God to come together once again and give you praise and give you glory, oh God, for the thing that you are ready to do for us in this parish. Father, we thank you for allowing us to lay down our difficulties, oh God, but send your Holy Spirit to liberate our mind and our thinking, oh God, so we can make sound decisions, oh God. We give you praise, we give you glory, we do it all. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. At this time, we have our roll call, Mr. Drew Charles Waslam.
Yeah.
Ms. Poneka Muse present. Mr. Willie Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Warren McCray. Mr. Ryan Berg.
Here.
Mr. Doug Watson.
Here.
I received two public comment forms. First item is the approval of minutes from last meeting of November 12, 2025.
I make the motion to accept.
Mr. Waslam?
Yes.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
Item number two on the agenda is the public hearing and adoption of special event permanent ordinance for St. Helena Parish. I entertain a motion to open the public hearing. And I second that motion.
Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
Do we have any comments or questions or concerns regarding?
Yes.
Oh, it was put in the paper and I had it available out there last, yes. It was put in the paper and it was available at the last meeting. I had copies out there on the table and everything and it was. That's okay, but I mean, I can get you a copy of it, um, neither, I can get you a copy of it. Anything interesting. It's the same. You, no, you got a copy of it from the last one. You took it to give it to the sheriff. The only thing that was changed on that was the time, the closing time was 10:00 PM. That was the only change that was made, the closing time. Okay, if there is no more questions regarding this, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make the motion to close.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
Okay, and at this time, I entertain a motion to adopt a special event permanent ordinance for St. Helena Parish.
I'm going to make that motion to adopt the special event permitting ordinance for St. Helena Parish.
Yes. Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
Okay, item number three, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on the budget of the St. Helena Parish Police Jury for the 2026 fiscal year on Tuesday, December 16, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the meeting room of the St. Helena Parish Police Jury Administration Building located at 17911 Highway 43, Greensburg, Louisiana. The budget will be available for public inspection in the Police Jury Office in the St. Helena Parish Parish Government Building, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday through Friday, except on legal holidays. Item number four, Mr. Tim Butler to do presentation on CPA services.
I asked to put this item on the agenda. I know we discussed in previous meetings about how can we save money and even still as other parish, you know, taxes a dollar and I want him to come and present, see if we can, different avenues, see how we can save money. And with that being said, Mr. Tim Butler, can you present?
Thank you. Uh, like I said, my name's Tim Butler. I live in Cleveland, Louisiana, and I'm a second generation accountant. My dad had CPA firm in Baker, built in 1975. So I've been in and around the county world my whole life. I had an event happen in my life a couple of years ago and I changed my business model. So basically, I just focus on governmental work right now. So, uh, I heard of a chance to throw my name in the ring here for y'all's services, and I'd like to, like to, like to do the work. I provide, you know, hands-on, I can come, I can help with the accounting people. Also, when I first got out of school, I went and did accounting, uh, not know what it worked, but, uh, I worked in IT for 15 years. So that was around the Y2K when everybody was switching computer systems because they were scared the dates were wrong. So I have a strong understanding of computer systems and I have a very good understanding of accounting. So the two kind of mesh together, uh, so I can help in many different ways there. One of my strong suits that I like to do is I have, I'm always accessible. Like I said, I changed my business model a few years ago. So I have five municipal clients I deal with and about 60 tax clients. You know, when I worked with my dad's firm underneath my sister, we had about 800 clients. So it's really helped for me to get better service to the clients that I do keep. So I was going to hand out a little pamphlet of kind of what, you know, what I propose and the services. I can't be without passing them around.
Quick, uh, question. Can you explain how it can be, uh, transparent and accessibility for like both the public and the board as well?
Say that again?
I said, can you explain how it can be like transparent and accessibility for like the public, your, your service for the public and the board as well?
Yeah, I mean, I, I come to all my meetings, you know, all the board meetings I, I attend. So, and then again, I'm, I'm, I give out my number. I'm accessible at any time for any questions to board members. Um, I could come to the meetings and, you know, any questions on the financials, I can answer. So that's, like I say, with a smaller clientele, I do provide a better service in that manner.
Anybody have any question?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is Mr. Tim proposing to replace our current?
No.
Our current CPA, CPA who does the monthly reports?
No, he, he's not proposing. He's just, uh, just to give some, you know, different, um, avenues, a way to save money or like the cost of differences instead of just going with one throughout, like every time we renew, he would just come giving his service of how we can cut, uh, down on the cost or whatnot. He's not, we're not asking to replace, not at the moment anyway. We just want to, him to express the services that he provide.
Oh, so he, he.
He provide the CPA, he provide the same services, but he was just trying to come, uh, just extend his services. We're not, we're not replacing anybody at the moment.
Okay, so you're not replacing, so he's offering to provide additional services for the parish on top of what our current CPA is doing, additional services? Services for efficiency?
Correct.
Okay, um, well, I heard his presentation and it's almost similar to mine. And only, only comment I have regarding his, um, offer of services and efficiency, and in my part of view, the best way to provide efficiency and transparency, which you're looking for, is to perform those services in-house. And that is to train current employees on what CPA firms are providing and reduce that cost and increase the training and the knowledge of current employees. So that would cut down costs and increase morale in the office and have a long-term replacement pool of, uh, employees because now we have a, a group of people who are now understanding that process. So what, what I'm saying is, that's fine what he's offering, uh, but the best way to be efficient and build up morale is to have someone do this in-house and train staff to continue to do this in-house. That way, you don't need no one outside unless there is an audit that needs to be done yearly, then you can hire a CPA. But basically, month to month, you have the staff that can train and do this, provide the reports, and then, uh, present that to the board and to the parish. That's one of the comments I have.
And I, I can agree with him on, so redundancy, no matter what your processes are, you know, is someone replaceable? If someone drops off, you continue to work with. You know, do you have redundancy in backup? Do you have redundancy in the computer systems? You know, if the building burned down tonight, what would you do tomorrow? That's the questions that you have to look at, you know, again, my computer background, accounting background, those are the things that I look at and say, you know, what's the worst-case scenario that can happen to you? Where are you going to be when it, when it does happen? All, all looks good on a sunny day. When the weather's rough, that's when you need the help. And the gentleman said redundancies in systems and people, that's a, that's a strong suit.
And I just want to say one last thing on that. The people of the parish, I said what I said because if we train in-house and these people live in the parish, we now employ our people, give, elevate their skills, and then have a prolonged pool of people to, to replace them in the long run. But if we continue to hire, and I'm not putting them down, I'm not putting anyone down, but if we continue to hire outside agency to help us do things, when we can train people in-house, like myself who lived here for 27 years, everything he says, I've done that. And I'm not trying to compete against him, but I think I'm a little bit older than him, but already, already done that. IT and, and, and business and accounting. So my, my thing is to bring it in-house. All those things he's saying and what the CPA is doing, bring it in-house.
Who would be responsible for training those employees?
And that's where you would hire someone who is on the road, who's living in parish, who works for the parish, living in parish, be responsible for all those reports, all those accounting procedures that he's talking about, redundancy and everything else, and employee here, lives here, and then only be responsible for all those responsibilities that he just said, but then train the staff to be redundant in case someone is sick, goes out on maternity leave, whatever, train the staff. In addition to that, what he is, I'm also a professional educator. I have a doctorate in education. So I, I know how to train people as well as accounting and IT. So all I'm saying is, that way is more efficient and it creates morale in the parish and in the staff, because now you're going to the house and now you have a long list of people who can replace someone when they retire, or when they're out sick, or when they, uh, get ill, and not depend on an outside agency of the parish. Because we want to, we want to give jobs out to people. And I'm saying, to me, that's the best way.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anybody have any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Item number five on the agenda is with the Audubon Regional Library. A is Mr. Trevor Collins to give updates on the library.
Hello, everyone. Trevor Collins with Audubon Regional Library. I wanted to give you just a few updates on what's been happening with the library since last bespoke. We had a successful feeding program for the little ones over the summer, as some of you know. Uh, we gave over between the two parishes 52,500 meals, uh, which was the most by a good margin for any rural system in Louisiana. And just in this parish, uh, we gave out 32,956. So that's meals and the bellies of little ones, uh, that we gave out during summer. That's a partnership again with the Greater Baton Rouge Food Bank and the U.S. Department of Agriculture. The library didn't spend a dime on that, uh, and none of your taxpayer money went, a dime of that went to that. So, um, we also, we had a pop-up library around summer at the Fifth Ward Recreational Center during their summer camp for about a week. We had, uh, two days of programming. The kids really loved that. Um, we had, we participated in the local, uh, farmers market and we, we are visiting now the St. Helena Nursing Home monthly. Uh, we've signed up, uh, several residents and we do programs, things like that there. Uh, we, we participated in the St. Helena, uh, Early Learning Center Literacy Day, uh, the COA Monthly Luncheon in September, uh, we were there for that. We, um, we worked with other community partners recently to co-host the Fall Fest. Some of you might have had a chance to go to that. It was at Greensburg Park. We saw between 300 and 400 there. So just really good public reception. We are now, just, um, point of fact, we are circulating hotspots as well. Uh, so if you don't have internet, you can come to the library and take it home with you. All you need is a library card. We were also, uh, we started a checkout Louisiana program where you can use your library card to get a free pass to museums in the state. For example, the World War II History Museum in New Orleans, which is quite, in my opinion, prohibitively priced, uh, but with a library card, you can go there for free. Uh, so that's just communicating value and partnership, uh, to you all. We right now have three initiatives going on. We had a Sock It To Me Sock Drive. If you have any new socks that you'd like to donate, we'll take them and we'll give them to shelters, uh, around the area of people that need them. We also, we're doing books for boots where we take items such as books or other things and we'll give them to the troops. And we also are doing Toys for Tots. So if you have any new toys that you'd like to donate that we can give to little ones that might not be able to have toys this Christmas, we'd love it if you dropped them off at any of the libraries. We also had a successful groundbreaking recently for the new location, like over there. Construction is moving along and has advanced substantially through earthwork and site preparation phases. Thank you all for supporting that, for letting it happen, for making it happen. It's, it's, um, very exciting for us. Uh, we've recently submitted, uh, requests for disbursement, uh, drafts and requests of in-kind payments to the state. These are attempts to get money that has been invested by you and, and by us as the library back to the parish and also to have investments that the library has put in, uh, count toward the match. We're working on, uh, Mr. Matthews is helping us to gather, uh, information from the parish for additional in-kind considerations such as your purchase of the property, for example. Right now, I'm, I'm rounding these to Mr. Matthews, who is the authorized representative for the parish for project. I'm happy to be authorized additionally if the parish would like to do so. Board officers in the library recently, were recently appointed. Mr. Matthews has agreed to continue as our president. And, and with that, I'll, I'll move into our budget, which was submitted to you. I'm happy to answer any questions. It was approved at our last public hearing and, uh, regular, just about a week ago. And lastly, I'll just move into the property transfer. So we will finish paying on the current location in Greensburg in December. Uh, if you remember, we, we discussed it in March, uh, that we would be talking about it again toward the end of the year. What you have before you is a joint resolution, uh, that your legal counsel has vetted, that will assist in facilitating the current Greensburg property, uh, transfer of that to the parish after we finish paying on it next month. And, and I'm happy again to answer any questions you have about any of this stuff. I just wanted to give you an update and let you know where we are and, and just ask you to consider the joint resolution.
Question?
Thank you, Mr. Trevor.
I make the motion for.
Yes, C.
I second that.
Mr. Waslam?
Yes.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Waslam?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Item number six is a motion to approve refund on building permit number 2023672, which is 589 Homestead Drive. Um, I did give you all that information in the packet. Um, I didn't know if you all had any questions. Some of us, I'm afraid not to go into detail here in the meeting.
I make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
I vote yes.
Item number seven, motion to approve invoice number six from Pro Civil Construction LLC in the amount of $36,049.65 for Otis and Willie Matthews road covered replacement payable from Disaster Projects.
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
Mr. Waslam?
Yes.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
I vote yes.
Item number eight, motion to approve invoice number four from Southern Site Services LLC in the amount of $35,686.47 for improvements to Charlie Overton Park and a Fifth Ward Recreational Facility payable from Louisiana Outdoors Project.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Waslam?
Yes.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
I vote yes.
Item number nine, motion to accept amended proposal from Prestige Construction and Management in the amount of $17,119 for upgrade to the clerk record office.
I'll make the motion.
What is he doing? This, the upgrade on what?
On the office area.
Yeah, and he's putting up a.
A safety barrier.
A safety barrier.
So that people won't be able to come back there, just in case you might get somebody that's pissed off about some charges or whatever reason, they won't have access to the employees.
What's it going to be?
No, it's not gonna fall.
Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
I vote yes.
Item number 10, a motion to authorize Secretary of Treasury to submit letter to USDA on behalf of the St. Helena Parish Police Jury to be released of grant obligations regarding the federal funds used to construct a metal building. This is in regards to the industrial park. As you all know, that federal program was ended by the president, so we have to be released from those grant funds from there.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Waslam?
Yes.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Waslam?
Yeah.
I vote yes.
That's the funds that, uh.
Remember, we had the revolving loan and then the other one, you remember, we got the grant for USDA to purchase that building, the industrial park. Mm-hmm. Yeah, all that's been, all that's been cut out by your president. So we got a letter from USDA and we've already submitted the remaining funds from the revolving loan. We had to submit that money back to them, so we've already done that part. No, we had it. It was in the CD. We've always had that in the CD, yes.
You have to give it back?
Yes. Yes, sir. Item number 11 on the agenda, it's Courtney Coleman to open and read aloud seal bids received for the 2026 calendar year.
At this time, I will read all seal bids for 2026. The first one is bunch gravel, wash road gravel, pea gravel, washed concrete sand dirt. Wash road gravel per ton $24, concrete sand $4, pea gravel seal aggregate $14, and dirt $4. Next one is Walker Sisters. And they're bidding on the clay gravel dirt, $3 per cubic yard. What was the name of them?
Walker Sisters.
And this one is tri-pair stain and gravel. Um, the wash road gravel for $25 a ton, the C, the, no, the size three seal aggregate pea gravel for $20 a ton, and $5 per ton for sand. This one is Gabriel's. The spiral coated 12-inch diameter for $23.85, 15-inch diameter for $29.78, 18-inch diameter for $37.70, 24-inch diameter for $47.63.
Those covered? What, what is it for?
Spiral coated.
Covered? Oh, I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
30-inch diameter for 62.49, 36-inch diameter for 78.91, 42-inch diameter for 99.53, 48, 48-inch diameter for $115.27, 54-inch diameter for 133.14, 60-inch diameter for 196.54, and 72 diameter for 302.42. And this one, the spiral gavernize. The first one was the spiral coated. This one is spiral gavernize, 12-inch diameter for $19.99, 15-inch diameter for $23.99, 18-inch diameter for $29.99, 24-inch for $37.99, 30-inch for $55.40, 36-inch for 66.48, 42-inch for $85.32, 48-inch diameter for $97.51, 54, uh, for $109.69, 60-inch diameter for $172, and 72 for $272.59. And this material resource for coal mix.
For what?
Coal mix.
Oh, coal mix.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's wrong.
Material resource. All right, the PM plus material bulk for 112 ton, the PM plus material bulk delivered to maintenance yard for 126 a ton. Smaller loads can be delivered and freight will change. PM plus in 50-pound bags, 56 bags per pallet for $14 a bag, and PM plus in 50-pound bags, 56 bags per pallet for $20 a bag. And PM plus in fifty pound bags, fifty-six bags per pallet for twenty dollars a bag. This is from Ergon. And this is for Katonic Emulsified CRS2. CRS2 for two dollars and sixty-nine cent a gallon and freight at a hundred and, no, one thousand four hundred thirty dollars per load. The, um, Kadianic Emulsified CRS2.
What is it?
And this is midies. And there's this motor oil that's well. They feel like, they feel like it's good. All right. The all-purpose motor oil, BLD fifteen W by forty point thirty-eight, uh, eleven fifty, Super S FG two thousand synthetic blend, fifteen W forty CK four motor oil at eleven fifty a gallon. And then the hydraulic oil, Super S, BLD, who knows what it is? The AGRI Plus Agricultural Hydronic Fluid Buck for eight sixty a gallon. And the grease, uh, twenty-eight dollars a case, and that's the CAM2 High Temperate Lithium Complex Grease, ten fourteen ounce. An additional item is the CAM2 Blood Diesel Exhaust Fluid, two, by two point five gallon, and then sixteen seventy-five a case. And this one is dog coat.
You say dog coat?
Mm-hmm. CAM oil, Dry Dean HD synthetic blend, team by W CK four, fifty-five dollars, fifty-five gallon drum for four hundred and sixty dollars, five gallon pail at fifty-eight dollars. Hydraulic oil, the tractor hydraulic fluid J twenty C premium, fifty-five dollars, fifty-five gallon drum for three ninety-five, five gallon pail for forty-four dollars. Dry Dean HD eighty by five ninety, LS GL five eighty-five W forty, LS GL five, five, five gallon pail at seventy-two dollars.
Seven hundred and twenty-five cents or seven hundred and...
Seven hundred and twenty-five. And then a premium H E P two grease, five gallon pail at one twenty-six fifty, and ten by forty ounce tubes at three dollars and twenty-five cents. And at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to take all bids under advisement.
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
Mr. Wasson?
Yeah.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCurry?
Yes.
Mr. Wasson?
Yeah.
Okay. Item number twelve on the agenda is the discussion of the corners office.
Good evening. I pushed it on. I met with the corner. As you know, we, a while back, when we first got offered, we did purchase. But we got a corner van off of the state surplus. It was an old model van, and it's kind of been worked to the ground. And so, right now, we in desperate need of a van by corner. And so, he expressed to me, you know, we're going out to pick up, um, loved ones to see spiders. It's kind of embarrassing to show up in a van that's barely, barely working. I know we don't have much funds in the general fund. What I am proposing, um, to do is, I do have some CRI money, um, in Homeland Security. I would like to see if it would be possible for us to use some of those funds to purchase a new van for the corners office. It's definitely needed.
Have we gotten any quotes on the...
So, so, I'm looking first at state contract. You will give us the best fees. Also, looking at other resources to see what we can get in. But I know the biggest question is going to be how do we fund it? And, you know, because it's such a great need, I'm definitely willing from my department to kind of chip in to help. I know general fund is kind of stressed right now, but it's something that we desperately need. So, I just kind of want to put it on your radar, that we do need to upgrade, um, that van. We did do some work to the current van to get it fixed. It's, it's running, but it's not in the best shape.
Will we be able to sell it, the current van?
We can't give that thing away.
We can find surplus. I don't know what you would get, but, um, we definitely need to get a better vehicle. So, so what, it was, it was down for a good while, so what happened is, we was able to get, uh, a neighborhood parish to come in to do transport for us. That's only going to last for so long, so eventually, we do need to try to figure, um, something out.
So, they, they services are free, or we have to pay them?
They did it out of favor because we, you know, we were down at the moment. So, like I said, it's running right now. Um, we had to put new catalytic converters on it and new batteries, but it is running. But again, once you go to spending money on vehicles...
The catalytic converter went out or somebody stole it?
It was stolen. So, so we currently now have housed on the, the yard, so it's behind the fence locked up.
So, that's where the new one would be too? Where would be?
Yeah, we want to keep it locked up, not set somewhere where somebody could get to it and...
He could take a ride in the van itself.
Not driving.
Yeah. Laid out in the back.
But I did, I did talk to our current CPA. Um, they're kind of working to try to look at the funds that we have over the course of some years. So, we're getting money coming in that we've been using for community readiness. And we should have, um, money available from that grant, um, that I did to, to kind of help with this van. So, I just kind of want, once I get some pricing and whatever, I'll put it to you. But I would have to come to you all to allow us to use those funds once we find something. So, I just kind of want to kind of give, put you on notice that that's what we're looking for.
Thank you.
Okay.
Item thirteen on the agenda, motion to reject all bids received for the installation of the new seven point five O ton package dual compressor for the San Lane Parish Courthouse second floor.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Wasson?
Yes.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCurry?
Yes.
Mr. Wasson?
Yeah.
I vote yes.
Item number fourteen on the agenda, motion to accept and renew the HVAC preventive maintenance proposal agreement from Sharky Mechanical Services LLC.
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Mr. Wasson?
Yeah.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCurry?
Yes.
Mr. Wasson?
Yeah.
Item fifteen, motion to revise the policy concerning post-employment benefits, stipulating that effective November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, new hires will not be entitled to post-employment benefits upon retirement.
So, we discussed this in the committee meeting. Um, I'm not sure if y'all wanted to agree or disagree. But moving forward, as far as anybody that's retiring from the parish, us not being liable for paying them full benefits as we have done in the past. So, we, we, we talked about it, but we didn't come up with a final discussion whether we were or not.
I agree with it.
So...
Do you need a motion?
Yes, if we want to change the policy, we will. Yeah.
Well, we talked about it. Can I just go with it? Yeah. I'll make it.
I'll second it.
Mr. Wasson?
Yes.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCurry?
Yes.
Mr. Wasson?
Yes.
I vote yes.
And just to clarify it before we go into further, those that are already here is grandfathered in. So, if you employed, so the wrong misinformation won't get out, the ones that are currently employed is grandfathered in. And then moving forward, anybody that's hired after today would not be eligible for it. Okay.
How long we work for?
They... Yeah. New employees, yes, new employees.
Lord woman, listen, Muse.
It's lying.
Item number sixteen, motion to officially transfer the maintenance department under the authority and administrative supervision of the building official and that Edward Galman shall be designated as our reg supervisor overseeing all maintenance department operations, personnel, and activities.
Well, we talked about this in the committee meeting as well. I made that recommendation. Um, Mr. Galman, I guess the thing would be is, because you're overbuilding and maintenance, over the building permits and stuff like that, I feel like it'll be best put in your department to oversee it because you know what's needed. If something is not up to code, things like that. Um, I don't know how you feel about it, because you will be the one that's overseeing. I, I would like for to have your input on it.
Well, I think I expressed to a couple of, of board members that, uh, number one, I want to do all I can to help.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, number two, uh, I thought that, uh, Mr. Matthews was doing an awesome job. Uh, and, uh, I certainly wouldn't want to do anything that I would be with another person that I work with. But at the end of the day, I want to do what I can to make it better. By desire that I serve, uh, as I expressed a couple, you know, I hope they'll settle me and the extra work too.
So, you okay with it, but...
I'm okay with it.
Somewhere down the line, you want to be compensated for your work, is what you're saying? And sum it in words. Sum it up.
Sum it up.
It was my idea.
If he takes that position, we'll cut him a dollar. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Wasson?
Yes.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCurry?
Yes.
Mr. Wasson?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Freeman, do you have any problems with the floor?
Okay. Item number seventeen on the agenda, and I will need to make a correction in my reading, is a motion to hire Alonso Lee as general labor for Road District Four at thirteen dollars per hour, effective of unpassing drug screening physical. And Jenna does say five, but that is for Road District number four. As per you, yes.
Yeah, this didn't come through the committee, did it?
Yes, he did.
She just had it wrong, that wrong.
Ma, I'm also talking to y'all. Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Wasson?
Yeah.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCurry?
Yes.
Mr. Wasson?
Yeah.
Item number eighteen is for Fire Protection District number four. A is a motion to add Fire Protection District number four Bradley Graves and Leslie Atkins to Police Bureau cross insurance policy for cost-saving purposes. And B is going to be the closeout of Fire Protection District Four.
And do you have to...
This was another thing that was discussed in, in the committee. And it's adding Brad and, um, Les to the insurance policy for cost savings. Now, the District Four Fire Department will actually be responsible for their premiums. We're not going to, we're not paying them. It's just putting them under our policies, but they're going to be responsible for their own premiums.
We just going to add Brad, right?
No, we add Les too. Les is the one that's in Atlanta Fire. So...
I'll make that.
I'll second it. Okay.
Mr. Wasson?
Yeah.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCurry?
Yes.
Mr. Wasson?
Yeah.
I vote yes.
Ms. Muse, before you go, I'd just like to say thank you, but the reason why is also because we no longer can offer a group policy. And so, I just want to make sure that everybody is aware. That's the reason why we had to ask for a transfer. Because we only have one employee. The rest of them was offered to insurance. So, we couldn't offer, um, a group policy longer. That's what the few cross people saw, the Brown and Mr. Massey. So, we're just asking, um, for grace. And thank y'all for doing that for us.
And also, while we are on fire before, um, Mr. Matthews, he was able to go and they completed the sale of a fire truck, um, to Greensburg Fire, um, and that truck sold for forty thousand dollars. So, that is going to be enough to carry them through this, the remainder of the year, and they should be good, good next year as well. So, everything should be able to go back as it was, with the exception, you know, we're going to still help them with the savings out here, but the operation should be able to resume back to normal.
Everything still come to the board, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Should be.
They can still have their work done and everything, so, um, what they need is they need to have one year.
So, the requisitions and everything, we got to review them and make sure everything's in order before, uh, the money is issued out.
Yes, we still, yeah, we, yeah.
I just want to make sure.
Yes. Okay. Item number nineteen, motion to acknowledge receipt of monthly budget to actual comparison and financial reports received for reviews prepared by Sibley and Newell.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Wasson?
Yes.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCurry?
Yes.
Mr. Wasson?
Yeah.
I vote yes.
All right. Item number twenty, motion to approve checks written at the last regular meeting in a total amount of seven hundred seventy-four thousand eight hundred nine dollars and twelve cents. And no, this was mon, not money that was paid to vendors or money that went outside of Police Jury. These are our annual budget transfers that are done every year, so that's why that amount is there.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Mr. Wasson?
Yes.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCurry?
Yes.
Mr. Wasson?
Yeah.
I vote yes.
Item number twenty-one is a motion to approve requisitions as copies submitted by your purchasing agent.
Yeah, I was just looking at some of them, and I'm glad the fire chief is here. Uh, I thought, no, I feel like Ms. Reed was like, uh...
Ms. Reed wanted to speak too, yeah.
You got a few questions that, like on y'all, the mechanics that we use, that price that low, do y'all get like quotes or just you, just one certain guy?
Um, this is the, this guy Bulldog E V T is a certified E V T emergency vehicle technician. We have used him for years, and he's one that has, he comes out, what we call him, it doesn't matter. We had tried using Holmes. If you look at the hourly rate, uh, Bulldog's is a hundred and fifteen dollars. Holmes is a hundred and fifty. Holmes just got their certification in pumps or E V T. I don't even know if they're certified in pumps. But Brian Binkley is certified with hail pumps, and that's what's on the majority of all our fire trucks. So, with him knowing, and he actually does our pump test, our yearly annual pump test that we have to have. And he was working on the pump because we had had some problems at the last fire. So, this is on three fifty-one. That's our first out unit, our main engine. And we just need to get it back on the running board. I have two other trucks that's down. I had to actually get, uh, Sibley to come pick one up. Something with the switch messed with the computer and it locked it up. We couldn't move it. We couldn't crank it. We couldn't do anything with it. So, he had to come pick it up last week with a wrecker so that they could work on. We had thought originally that it was due to some work that they had did, and it was going to be under warranty. When he got it in the shop, it didn't have anything to do with the starter that was replaced two months ago. It was the computer system locked up. But we try to get quotes when we know, but, um, you kind of get burnt when you use somebody and they don't know. So, with, uh, Brian Binkley, it's going to be hard to beat a hundred and fifteen dollars for a specialist.
Yeah, never before, that, that's a large amount. Do you have to get a quote?
Uh, that would be up to them. I don't know.
Use a new plan.
The twenty-five thousand, five sixty-five dollars. Five fifty-sixty-five.
That E V T, they have to be certified, so there's not...
Three mechanics in this tri-parish area that hold those qualifications, so, I mean, a quote? Go with the guy that she's been using all this time. We use him as well, so, I mean, he's reputable. His labor cost is a lot cheaper than Holmes'. So, basically, if you go out for a quote, you're going to get Holmes and Bulldog.
We just keep working on it. Bulldog, I love Bulldog.
Bulldog, this Bulldog, yes, the E V T, he's still, he's been in business for years.
He came from here, probably. Are they local?
From Pontcharlton.
Pontcharlton.
I mean, I said he comes out, we've had fires, we've had... South Second Ward's area, and the truck quit, and he's come out that morning, four o'clock in the morning.
four o'clock in the morning to help us get it following. So, um, trust goes in our life. Yes. And reputation. Yes.
I'll take it on you. Yeah, I'll make the motion.
No, can I go on this, uh, South Second, Ms. Conish? And you, that, where is that money coming from? Thirty-four thousand for your supplies that you?
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
Your name, hm? Actually, your name was on this requisition for thirty-four thousand.
That's for, uh, a bunker, a gear.
A bunker gear?
We hadn't had gear in.
Oh, yeah, I'm just saying, if I said, but work is coming out to your funds or Mr. Matthews, you got your grant or what?
It should be going to ours.
It's not on the requisition, that's why I asked.
It should be, I think, something to ours, huh?
Yeah, it's South Second Ward.
I'm calling, I might.
It's been on there, uh, it's on the requisitions. Just make sure y'all have that it's coming from somebody y'all follow.
Right. Can I do this, you close this one out? Go ahead, Ms.
I have one, I had turned that off. On the car.
You go ahead.
On, we have the three trucks that's down. The three fifty-one, which is our first engine now, is stationed at the ten forty-three. That's the one that's twenty-five thousand. The one that's at Coleman Town is three fifty-three. That's, uh, the engine out of that station. It also has pump issues. They both went down within twelve hours. One went down one night, and the other one went down when they did the pump test the next morning. I have the brush truck that I just said, Sibley has it down there. Um, moving forward, can I submit my requisitions to get those repaired, or do we have to wait till January first?
Have to wait, yes.
I don't have any.
You have to have a truck.
Yeah. I have the quotes.
If she gives them, I need to do a quick, I might have to do a budget amendment like tomorrow, cause my budget is done for this year. That's the thing, I might do a budget amendment. It's gonna be a budget amendment I need to get done.
Information.
She give me, if she can get it to me tomorrow with the amount that everything on it, so I can do a budget amendment on it.
I can do it tonight.
She can do it tonight.
So three fifty-three, how much is it?
Three fifty-three's, um.
Just under three thousand dollars.
Yeah, so that's, that's nice.
Two thousand six hundred twenty-four dollars and twenty-one cents, and that's rebuilding the pump.
She get it to me tonight, I re-submit, and I make her own, so I can just stay on in the balance.
Well, Ms. Reed, you get with Sharonda after the meeting, so y'all can talk about that and.
I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second?
I second it.
Mr. Watson?
Yeah. Yeah.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Item number twenty-two is a motion to approve employee's accrual benefits report.
I make the motion.
I'll second. Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Motion to approve few reports as reported, um, submitted by purchasing agent.
I make that motion.
I'll get a second.
I second.
Mr. Watson?
Yeah.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yeah.
All y'all documents are sent to the email just in case if y'all were looking for them.
Twenty-seven, motion to acknowledge receipt of work reports submitted by superintendent.
I'll make it.
I'll second. Mr. Watson?
Yeah.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Item twenty-five is a motion to enter into executive session to discuss professional conduct of employee John Scott.
I make the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Watson?
Yeah.
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yeah.
Mr. McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.